We'll have two minutes of shuffling in the audience. And now I'll call to order the November fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. Can we have a roll call for the city council, please?
This is for the meeting for the joint meeting?
Yes, joint meeting.
Roll call for council members. Councilmember Manoukian.
Here.
Najarian. Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here.
I'll roll for the agency.
Roll for the agency.
Agency members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian. Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Manoukian.
Here.
Can we hear your report, please?
Agenda for the November fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, joint public meeting of the city council and the redevelopment agency was postponed on Thursday, November ten, two thousand and eleven, on the bulletin board outside City Hall before you as a public hearing. Director of Community Development regarding Verdugo Gardens project to be located at six-ten through six-twenty-six North Central Avenue Combine Stage One Two Design Review and Development Agreement. One is council motion approving Combine Stage One Two Design. Subject to comments and conditions of the council, be as ordinance for introduction approving the statutory development agreement.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Mayor Friedman, Chairman Manoukian, members of the council and agency, my name is Vilias Zmetitis. I'm the case planner for the project. Verdugo Gardens is a six-story, two-hundred-and-twenty residential rental unit project proposed on a one-and-a-half acre site at six-ten through six-twenty-six North Central Avenue. The site is located in the downtown specific plan Gateway District and in the central Glendale Redevelopment Agency. It is bordered on the north by Sanchez Avenue and the one-thirty-four freeway, on the west by Central Avenue, and on the south by Duran Street. The development of the project requires demolition of one occupied medical office building on the corner of Central and Duran, and the Crocodile Cafe, which was on the northwest corner of the project site, has was demolished earlier this year. The current project replaces the previously approved two-hundred-and-eighty-seven residential unit, twenty-four-story Verdugo Gardens project that was approved back in two thousand and eight. This revised Verdugo Gardens project is before you this afternoon for design review board approval and for introduction of the development agreement. As mentioned, the design of the Verdugo Gardens project is a six-story, two-hundred-and-twenty residential rental unit project with an overall height of seventy-five feet. The building is designed in a contemporary style and arranged in S configuration with two individual common open space courtyards facing in opposite direction. The project features two-hundred-and-ninety-six parking spaces and complies with all of the DSP and zoning development standards, including parking, landscaping, and open space. The design review submittal package was reviewed by our urban design studio and a detailed analysis was included as part of your staff report. The project has been found to be consistent with the design guidelines and standards of the DSP, and staff recommends its approval for the design review. In addition to the design review, the applicant is requesting a development agreement to lock in the current park and library impact fees as per council direction of July the nineteenth. Under the terms of the DA, the developer waives all rights to request a fee refund, and the developer will submit the foundation-only plans by the end of this year in order to lock in the current fee rates. If foundation plans are not submitted by the end of this year, the scheduled fee increase will go into effect. If the building permits expire during this time, the developer will also be required to pay new building and plan check fees and the new park and library fee as well. And the DA contains the terms needed to implement the fee structure. It does not include any vesting rights to any current zoning standards or regulations that are typical of DA's. The planning commission reviewed the development agreement on October fifth as required by state law, and at that time recommended that city council approve the development agreement. And lastly, an addendum to the certified EIR for the original Verdugo Gardens projects was prepared for this project as well. The addendum supports the finding that the current project will not result in any new significant impacts or in any greater impacts that were analyzed for the previous certified EIR for the original twenty-four-story, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven residential unit Verdugo Gardens project. That concludes staff's comments. If there are no further questions, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Rodney Khan.
To Manoukian.
There's a number of fees I was going to ask from the other projects as well that are included in your in your report.
Yes.
Like the art fee, two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. Is that fee paid to the city, or is it, or do they have the, do they have the option of putting up public art on the building and not pay that fee?
The developer has the option of either contributing two percent of the estimated construction value, which is twenty-nine-point-five million. So they either pay two percent towards an art component on the project site, or they can pay the one percent in lieu of art fee. So the developer is choosing to contribute to the one percent.
And the park and library impact fee, do they have an option of not paying that in any way, shape, or form?
No, at this point in time, if they submit, or if, if in regards to the development agreement, they submit foundation-only plans by the end of this year, they waive their right to a refund request, and they will be paying seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, which is three-thousand-five-hundred dollars per unit, which is the current park and library impact fee. If they do not enter into the development agreement, if they do not submit the foundation-only plans, that park and library fee goes up to seven thousand as of January two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
And just to clarify for the public, they also pay a school fee of six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars.
Correct.
I would like to, while the hearing goes on, I'd like to have a summary of how much in fees we'll be receiving after today's hearing, not only from this project, but from the other two.
From the other project, I would have to defer and bring that forward.
That's what colleagues to get the fees to in the future.
In the future, that would be fine.
We'll have that for you in a memo.
Just as a question from the city attorney, can we require them to pay the art fee as opposed to putting in art?
It's their option. They either pay the fee or put their art onsite.
The simple answer, from what I remember from our discussion, is you cannot require it. You have to give them the option. But they've chosen to put the money into the fund in this case.
They've chosen to do what?
To put the money into the fund.
Oh, so they've chosen to pay the money?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to be clear, I mean the park fee. How much will this project, park and library fee, how much will this project and the other two projects bring us in terms of a parks fee? Because it will be paid before the end of the year.
Correct. Once they go, once they go into plan check, those fees will be paid, and we will bring that figure back to you in a memo.
No, but I'd like it today.
Oh, you'd like it today?
I mean, it can be a ballpark figure. I'm just curious.
If we can continue on with this, I'll call our office. We've already prepared that memo for you, and if it's not in your in-basket, it should be shortly. So we'll get that while we're continuing.
It was sent as a memo to you via email. I can actually pop it up on my BlackBerry and show it to you.
Just to be clear, so we get what Mr. Quintero is asking for, are you asking for these three projects today or all the projects for the whole year?
No, no, these three.
The three today, so you should be able to just add them up, right at the staff reports now?
These three projects.
Okay, thank you.
This project.
Okay, let me go to the public if there's no more questions for staff. Rodney Khan, to be followed by Mark Nathanson.
Good afternoon again, mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My office is Brand Boulevard here in the city of Glendale. Thanks. With me today, I have principals from the ownership group, Mapleton RDS and Urban Partners. The ownership group is led by Mr. Mark Nathanson, along with our architects, engineers, and other consultants who have worked on our project. Our project site, as mentioned by staff, is located in the Gateway District of the downtown specific plan, and actually, this site is very much a gateway. To the north of us is the one-thirty-four freeway, to the south, medical office buildings, to the east is parking structure, five-story parking structure and parking lots, and to the west is a twenty-five-story office building. One of the major benefits of our site is the proximity to the freeway, and this affords our residents easy access onto the freeway and easy access off of the freeway, so they are not required to drive through the city streets in order to get home. The other challenging item for us was because of our close proximity to the freeway, this intersection experiences peak hour traffic congestion. We are addressing this issue. In fact, we're actually improving the existing conditions as a result of our project. If you notice from this slide, it calls out there's a new turn lane, or actually, traffic lane, that's being added along Central Avenue. It's being added along Sanchez and along Duran as well. So all of the street frontages of our site, we'll have new traffic lanes.
I just asked that no parking on any three of those streets, right?
That is correct.
Traffic only.
Our traffic engineers work closely with the city engineers in terms of the driveway locations, and specifically as it relates to the intersection of Pioneer and the signalization, and along with our driveway location on Sanchez, along with onsite and offsite circulation patterns and these new traffic lanes that I'm referring to. Two other points I'd like to add. One is, is over the years, we've learned more and more about sustainable design, green building construction techniques, and alternative forms of transportation. All of these elements have been incorporated into our project. One example of sustainable design is we had a wise person suggest to us to consider solar panels for our swimming pool, and that is exactly what we are doing. Finally, our project is fully code compliant. There are no deviations, no variances, no exceptions required. The parking, the height, the floor area, everything complies with current code. I'll conclude my remarks, and I'll answer questions, or I'll turn it over to Mr. Nathanson. Thank you.
Are you sure there's no exceptions, nothing unique from the city?
One hundred percent sure.
Because if you did, I'd vote no on it.
Good afternoon, Mayor Friedman, members of the city council, city manager, and the city staff. My name is Mark Nathanson. I'm chairman of Mapleton RDS. It is my dream to come here before the council and to build on this site. I purchased this site with my partners, Paul Keller, Urban Partners, Robbie Ship, over seven years ago, and the idea was to build off the freeway a beautiful high-rise building. We had Johnson Fain design it. We came before the council. We got the entitlements for two-hundred-and-seventy-eight units for condos, and the market collapsed. I was very disappointed in this. My dream had become a nightmare for this site. Needless to say, like the resiliency of the city of Glendale itself, we are very pleased to be back here now. We have a new project. We're extremely excited about the project. Financing is available for this project. It is designed by KTGY Group, an internationally-known architectural firm that has designed for over two decades some of the most prominent residential and commercial buildings in Southern California and around the world. Hopefully, subject to the city council, my dream can become true that the gateway to Glendale will not be a bunch of vacant lots, but instead, a world-class project of two-hundred-and-twenty apartment units. We believe that these units, if approved by the city, will meet the standards of the city, will be much less dense than the high-rise condo project that we were doing, and we appreciate the help and the encouragement the city staff, members of the council, have given me personally after the market crash in two thousand and eight. I'm here before you to ask permission to build these, what I consider state-of-the-art architecture for apartments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Manny Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members in the audience, Manny Gonzalez, and I'm a principal with KTGY Group Architects in Santa Monica. It's a pleasure to be here and explain a little bit about the process and the design that we developed. Before I do that, I want to thank staff. It was a pleasure to work with them. It was an iterative process, and especially working with the urban studio and Alan Loomis to create this wonderful design that I think is something we can all be proud of. You can see the rendering up here on the screen. This is our night shot from the corner of Sanchez and Central, and truly shows that this is a gateway design for the city of Glendale. You can see at this corner here, we actually have our gateway element with the tall vertical glass, and then at the pedestrian level, we actually have a dramatic lobby that will welcome people in as you come into the city of Glendale. The building itself, as was mentioned before, is in an S-shaped pattern with two courtyards, and they're designed to address the specific adjacencies that we have with the parking structure back here to create that private open space and have these units open onto that area. And this courtyard actually provides views to the exterior from the interior units and creates a amassing separation between these buildings, and that's part of the scheme that we worked on, was to try to create a variety of massing and scale and articulation on the structure itself. Back to the corner of Central and Sanchez, you can see how we've come down Central, and then this element here actually turns the corner, transitions into a different building form, and gives a little bit of a view to the Verdugo Mountains and allows that opening coming out along Central to the dramatic mountain views that we have on Central. As we move down Central, you'll actually see that we break that mass up with this courtyard that I mentioned previously on the north, having that corner element and then transitioning as we go down Central into another building form that's a little more horizontal and has a little bit different articulation to it. As we go to the other corner at Central and Duran, we create another corner monument, a little bit less dramatic than we had at Central or at Sanchez, just because it's not quite the same gateway element, but it does bookend what we have on the other side. Another lobby that comes in off of Duran and allows us to have two central, or two focus points on each corner and lobbies for the building at each of these intersections. You can see as it transitions down Duran, another architectural style reminiscent of what you have on Sanchez appears and changes the massing as we go down. And then finally, the central part of the building going down Central, you could see that it is more linear element. It does break itself up as Pioneer comes in, where we have the entry to the parking structure, and it creates that mass in two forms, even though they're somewhat compatible on either side. The base down here actually has residential units tucked into the garage along Central, so there's stoops and a residential character along that street, and not the same element that we have up and above. These elements actually get some more playful balconies that vary in size and lengths and have movement on that facade as opposed to what you might find in a more typical residential structure. You can see here the variety of architectural elements and material that we have, from curtain wall systems to the stone veneer, different styles of stucco, metal cladding and railings on the exterior as well. When you look at the building plan, you can see the north courtyard that opens up onto Central and the pool deck area that creates a different, more private courtyard there with the fitness center and the community space as well. Around the perimeter, we have the street scape consistent with the downtown specific plan, and as we get down Sanchez, we open up that building so you can see the mountain view as well and create a public space there, and you could see on the rendering, if we would go back to it, that each of those lobbies actually pull in on the ground floor, so there's more open space at the pedestrian level than you have on the floor above. The courtyards are detailed here with the, the one that faces out to Central, a little more of a passive courtyard, and then the one we have in the center that becomes more of the active courtyard with the pools and spas and landscaping and outdoor fit, outdoor areas to use as well. This drawing shows our sustainable design features. As was mentioned before, we actually have the, we're putting in the panels to allow for the solar heating of the pool. We have two parking spaces for shared cars in this community, and we're trying to do as many things as we can in light of our desire to be a sustainable steward of the Going back to the elevation, you can see that what that view's going to look like and the gateway element that we do have coming into this community along Central and Sanchez. The construction of this development, our anticipation is we break ground in about three quarters, and we expect it to last about five quarters after that till we have substantial completion. The development and design team that we've assembled for this has a wealth of experience in this type of construction and this type of community design, and we anticipate that that experience will allow us to mitigate any measures that might happen during construction that might impact the area around the site. The members of that team are here available to answer any questions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have at this point in time.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes, the theater.
Pardon me?
The theater.
Yes.
What kind of a theater? It's the first time I've seen a set of plants with a theater.
What, it's, it's a private theater, and what happens is people will rent it, generally it's for things like the Super Bowl or Monday Night Football, and you can actually reserve it and have your parties in there.
Big reclining seats.
It's kind of the overstuffed step, step facility, but it's great. They'll have movie nights on Friday night, and what happens in communities like this is it tends to go the way that the community develops, so maybe it's retro movies, or it's Bogart, or what happened, whatever you might have. But it does create a really neat environment and an opportunity for residents to gather and enjoy each other.
I've seen them in high-end residences, the first time I've seen one.
It's a, it's a fairly popular thing right now in rental communities.
Very nice, and in a community room, which would be computers and all that kind of stuff?
That's actually changed a little bit. We'll have the computer operations, but the residents that come in here, every one of them has wireless and iPads, and that market keeps changing, but it's really more, it's more of the gathering place. It's a Starbucks kind of thing where you go hang out and, and meet your friends. And you tweet everybody and say, we're going to beat down there, and everybody goes downstairs.
What is that building to the east of it?
East?
That's the existing.
That's, our building actually stops right here, the building to the east.
Directly to the east of us is the Bank of America building, that's a fourteen-story building, and the five-story parking structure directly east of us serves that building that you're seeing.
Okay, it just looks attached, and it's not, I'm looking at.
No, our building starts here, goes around the corner.
All right, so it's not part of your project?
No.
I have a question. You have balconies on the first floor in Central?
There are stoops on the first floor.
There's stoops, they're not balconies any longer.
They're raised up because we can't, it has to do with accessibility. The front door is actually on the inside of the building, because you have to have an accessible route to that, so the, the exterior looks like a stoop, more of a traditional character. So the patios are actually usable patios that are about the same size as the other ones, but they're raised off of Central to provide a little bit of privacy.
How high are they raised?
I think it's two and a half or three feet, something like that. So you can walk up to it, but it's, it's more of a privacy standpoint, and it's really the traditional way when you look at East Coast architecture, that's the way they did. They usually were half a story in and a half a story out.
Okay, I mean, I expressed this before. I, I've lived in a lot of cities. I mean, I've lived in Boston, I've lived in New York, and I've never lived in a city where there were balconies on the first floor of a building like this. I mean, just for security reasons, at least maybe the neighborhoods I lived in. I mean, I had to have bars on my windows on the first floor. I can't imagine having a balcony. I would have preferred for the central scape if it had been more urban. I mean, to me, this is very, that's more of the type of facade you put on more of a, not so much a main artery street, but more like Elk, like we saw before, where you had, you know, all, all residential, not commercial. I would like to make the recommendation, I'm not going to vote against the project because of it, but I'd like to make the recommendation that you reconsider that and think about for the central facade only, doing something that's more of an urban look on the first floor.
Yeah, and our intention was to try to do what might be a live-work space where you could have some, some in-home services, so it would be a little more urban and in character, but it's, like some of the other communities you've seen tonight, it's really driven by the market environment and what you have, because it does make it difficult. But we've done quite a few buildings like that in Playa Vista and other areas where we do have stoops and, the nice thing is actually with this street, as busy as it is, it tends to be a little safer than if you were around the corner and down another block might, might be different. But I think the major street, and it's only a handful of units down there, and you do have eyes on the streets and residents coming in, that you'd probably be.
I like that, I'll leave it up to you. It's just if you think people will like that and use it.
You know, I always think that while I try to maybe socially engineer things and what people like, I'm always amazed that they will be eight people that want to live on that street, I believe.
Okay. Any other questions for the architect before we move on? Okay, my last card is Mike Mohill.
Thank you.
Afternoon, mayor, council members, and the viewing public. I'm getting all excited about this building. Wow. Can't wait to dive into the swimming pool, the garden, the green, everything's wonderful. But mayor, you made a statement, something to do about traffic and where people live. Glendale is a residential community, we're bedroom. Eighty percent of the people who live in Glendale work outside of Glendale. So, between the hours of seven and nine on Brand, Central, Colorado, Glendale Avenue, we're going to have about twenty-two-hundred new cars on the streets of Glendale. Can't wait to go driving through my beautiful area. I don't mind controlled growth, but this is accelerated growth. In three years, we're adding over a thousand new residents to Glendale, and over twenty-two-hundred cars in Glendale. Wow, I'm excited. And wait till these friends and family visit, these dwellers who live in these apartments and condos. Boy, they're going to love the traffic too, and they're going to go right to the Galleria. They're going to love the traffic around that place too. This is downtown Manhattan. I know you lived in the urban cities, but Glendale was always considered a residential community, never, never was it considered to be like downtown of any place. But this city council has decided, and the previous one, can you imagine in three years, over a thousand new residents on the streets of Glendale? Wow. And the impact of our schools, our parks, our libraries? When there's another drought, are you going to ask the residents of Glendale, the one who owned the houses up there, who put you people all in office, you're going to ask us to go ahead and cut down our water usage? I did my ten percent. Remember, it's the homeowners that take the brunt of the drought. Like you said, only about one-fifth of the people who live in apartments and condos use water. Folks at home, that's right, ma'am, one-fifth, that's right. The viewing audience, ladies and gentlemen, two thousand and thirteen is the new election. Vote for new council people who think of the residents who voted for you, not the developers who wanted to make, they're going, let's see if these developers live in Glendale once they build them and then they take off. Are they going to be living here? No, they're going to be like carpetbaggers. They're going to leave here and then leave. I've been here thirty-three years, I'm a stakeholder, and I want my council people to work for me, not for the developers, and not for the city employees with their salaries and pensions. This is what it's all about. We need more impact fees, more impact fees. We don't have any money for libraries or the parks, but we know where to get it, another high-rise. Thank you, my name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you. Mr. Manoukian?
Yes, how was the net tax increment calculated? It says one-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars.
That is an estimate based off the construction value of twenty-nine and a half million. You have to net out twenty percent going to pass-through payments and twenty percent to a citizen housing.
Isn't the property tax approximately one-point-one percent of the value of the property?
We use one percent.
Well, how many percent?
One percent.
One percent, that's three-hundred thousand, and we get thirteen cents on the dollar, don't we?
Unless it's in a project area, which this one is, so you're capturing a much greater share.
Until January.
Well, hopefully beyond January, but yeah.
Yeah, and, and the project, the project that was approved before, and this is for probably the consultant, was twenty-four stories and two-hundred-and-eighty-seven units, and it's the same, same lot size. This is the prior project.
Councilman Manoukian, yes?
Hanging Gardens one?
The, the Verdugo Gardens one was two-hundred-and-eighty-seven.
The Verdugo Gardens one was a 287-unit, 24-story building with a little less than 4,000 square feet of retail. That was the original project.
And this one, you have knocked it down 18 stories and it's still 220 units? How did you accomplish that? Is it, are the units half the size of the units that were planned for the Verdugo Gardens one, as you said?
Part of it, Councilman Menucha, is we looked at, it's a different market today than it was a few years ago. So the unit mix is very different. We have more smaller units than we did larger units from before. So that's one of the ways that we reduced down in terms of the overall height and the floor area from the last project. Yes.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Quintero?
Okay, well, I'll start by talking about what might have been eight years ago. I remember distinctly when I was shown the project, and I was just really, really loved the building. And I think I insulted the architect because I turned to him and asked, "Is this something that you got in Kuwait or in Abu Dhabi?" I mean, it was just, I don't think he was too pleased. He quickly told me, "No, it was his, it was his design." But it was just a spectacular building. That Verdugo Gardens, with gardens built into the, hopefully someday it'll come back on another corner. However, this design, I'm just as impressed with, quite frankly. I think it's a signature building on a signature corner. It's just a signature low-rise. I think the architectural team, and obviously Alan Loomis and the staff, Hassan, et cetera, I think they've come up with just a wonderful building. For the main corner that I use, when I come up the exit off of the 134 at Central, that's how I normally turn right to go to the City Hall or turn left to go to the House. And looking at that sort of deserted corner all these years, there's certainly been a turnoff, but that's in the past. I'm also very happy, just like in the original design, with the right turn lane. That is going to improve traffic. If you go down to Central right now and head to the freeway, you're going to see how there's quite a bit of traffic. Having that right turn lane all the way around the corner and then on to the 134 to go to the east is going to be a super big traffic improvement. The fact that the investor group is going to spend $29 million on this building, I think says something about the company, and it says something about Glendale, that they have that type of confidence in our community. And no, we're no longer a bedroom community, I might add. Disney's headquartered here, so is DreamWorks, and IHOP, and Public Storage, all of them publicly traded corporations. We have one of the largest malls in America. Then, of course, we have the Brand Boulevard of Cars. So the idea that we're a bedroom community, that just isn't, that isn't a fact. In terms of the fees, the staff got back to me, there are going to be multiple fees, multiple tax increments, et cetera. But just the park fees alone, this afternoon with the buildings that we've approved, we will have $1,100,000 entering into the city of Glendale's treasury that we will then turn around and spend on parks. So I think it's an excellent afternoon for the city, an excellent afternoon for the downtown. And I'm very happy that we're moving forward with Verdugo Gardens two. I'm looking forward to watching the construction as I go back and forth on Central and the freeway.
Mr. Weaver?
We all know that Mr. Mohill is going to run for city council again. Too bad he left already instead of staying for the comments. What he said, "At least four times a week, I drive down Central and make a left turn on Sanchez on the way to City Hall between 8:00 and 9:00 in the morning, and there's no traffic jam." So it's a bunch of bunk that Mr. Mohill's throwing out there about that. I want to make sure, is the official name of this Verdugo Gardens two? Because all the motions, everything, don't talk about Verdugo Gardens two.
Mr. Weaver, the, yeah, that's fine, the way, the motion's the way it is.
Okay. And yeah, I adore Verdugo Gardens one. Don't throw away that concept. It'll fit somewhere. I don't know where, but it won't have much trouble getting by if we ever see it again. Yeah, I like the design very much. The stoops, yeah, I'm looking at the drawing of it. They're up two or three feet. I think all three projects we looked at today have stoops, something I've pushed for a long time. If you live on the first floor, you hate to have somebody walk by your apartment, look straight in at you. Get it up two or three feet. Psychologically, it's much better for the people inside in terms of feeling secure and more private. I'd like very much that the lobby is going to be down the street and not on that corner there, because that's going to be the traffic corner where cars will be moving, and you don't want to really have that as the main lobby to come in and out. I like that. I like the fact that entrance and exit, the main one on Central is where Pioneer is, so you have a signalized intersection. Traffic will move much better. I know Mr. Mitchell will agree with that one. Ah, there goes the thumb up. And then there's the other entrance on Sanchez, but the B of A also has their entrance, their parking lot there too, on Sanchez. That's good. Solar heating in the pool, that's going to save a lot of electricity. I like everything about it. It's going to be interesting to see it go up. It's the signature, the gateway into the city of Glendale, because I don't consider when you get off at Pacific that you're coming into Glendale. You drop down to a freeway on-ramp going up. Here, you're entering Glendale. And what I hope I see someday, on that protrusion, when you come out, that wall there, you could put Verdugo Gardens on it. And personally, I was thinking, if it said Glendale's Verdugo Gardens, you know you're entering Glendale, and you will know the name Verdugo Gardens when it's built. I mean, it's staring right at you, it's a nice wide open space. So I think that would work, at least it's my suggestion. Now, this, no offense, but this is the best one I've seen today of the three, and I can't wait to see it go up finally. Before Crocodile Cafe, there was another restaurant there, and I ate there with my kids when they were small. They tore it down, and then Croc, this is the third version. I think it's going to last a lot longer, so.
Mr. Menucha?
I'm really on the fence on this project. I like the fact that you're paying the art fee instead of coming up with some cheaper design and putting it in the building and saying that it's public art. I think we should change that ordinance and have everybody pay the art fee so that we can do some programs or whatever. I like the height of the building. The height is in the right place. It doesn't run into any residential areas like the Elk Street project. And I disliked your original project, and I prayed to God that it wouldn't go through, and I'm glad it didn't. And I really want to vote against this project, but it's just, it's difficult because it's a well-designed project. I just have a problem with the density. If I do vote against it, and you know, at this point, like I said, I'm on the fence. If I do vote against it, it's just the density that will make me vote against it. Can they, I don't know if I asked, can they go back and not pay the art fee at this point if this is approved? And.
Yes, essentially, the requirement to comply with the ordinance is at the time they pull their building permit. But again, they've indicated they're going to pay the fee. But the requirement is that at the time they pull their building permit, that they either have an art plan or that they pay the fee.
Does this, this will have a development agreement?
They would also have to go in front of the Arts, is it Arts and Culture Commission?
Right, they would have had to go.
They have another layer of entitlements they'd have to go through. They wouldn't be able to do that, I wouldn't think, before.
Also, there is a requirement that if they're going to put the public art as part of the project, that that would be done along with the design process. And if they were to do that, then we would have to bring back the design to see if the art is compatible with the design.
So it would come back to us again?
That's right.
Mr. Nathanson, did you want to comment?
I'm not sure all the proper procedure, but I will commit that we will pay the art fee no matter what happens. We will also be putting art in the building, but that has nothing to do with the art fee, which we will commit. Councilman Menucha?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, I'll vote for it then in that case.
I think it's a very nice building. It'd been nice for it to be bigger, but you know, that's not going to happen, to be taller. But it is a building that's going to be, I agree with Mr. Weaver, a signature building when people come off the highway and into Glendale. And I think it's a lovely design. And my comment about the patios was only a practical comment, to really think about whether people on a Main Street like Central are going to want a patio, even if it's a couple of feet above the ground, and whether something that was more of an urban look would suit the building better. I make that as a recommendation. That way, if you change your mind, I don't think it would have to come back to us. Yeah, you would have the freedom to do that if that was part of the motion. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
Madam mayor, one other thing. I think Central slopes to the south, so the stoops are higher when you get down to the end of the project. They're probably up four or five feet there and two at the upper end, I'm guessing, on elevations. Did you close the public hearing on this one too?
Yes, I did.
Then I'm not listening. But I'll move 1A.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers, Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian? Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes.
And mayor, I'll introduce the audience at 1B.
Thank you, the ordinance has been introduced. The second item has been pulled.
I'm too, is a public hearing as well. Director of Community Development regarding Lumbly Lofts, 111 East Wilson Avenue and 215 North Maryland Avenue, final project approvals, including an amended and related disposition and development agreement. And this is an item to be continued until November 29th, 2011, at 2:30 PM without further public notice.
Okay, thank you.
We still have regular.
That'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Will we adjourn? Second.
We are adjourned.
For agency?
Some moved.
Second.
We are adjourned for the agency.
There's an agency meeting.
Oh, an agency.
Thank you, that's it.
Regular agency meeting.
We have a regular agency.
We have a meeting in fifteen minutes.